Hi Charlie.
Charlie Dear, eighteen ninety-eight. And I've got a couple of comments, I guess you could say, comments slash complex. Number one is March the twenty-ninth is National Vietnam Veterans War Day. And a year ago, I bought three full bricks to go out there with the memorial. I bought one for my friend which died from complications of Vietnam. One for my brother, not a Vietnam veteran, but he's a proud veteran. Then one was bought for me because I am a Vietnam veteran and purely by the grace of God, I come home. So, I can't understand why it has taken over a year to have those bricks put out there. I mean, somebody needs to have a thought to consider the fact that everyone is in charge of that. I mean, what is wrong with you? You know, my brother is getting close to getting his grave. You see, his grave before death. The second is, the recordings that you guys do here are useless. I mean, you cannot, from time to time, when I don't come to a planning board meeting or a council meeting, and I try to watch it on television, good luck because if the audio and the video is terrible. And it's been that way. I've been coming to these for over a year now. And I know it can't be rocket science, just to fix this. So, hey, one other thing. I have walked the park out there and it's beautiful. That's a fantastic job on that. The landscaping that's been done out there is beautiful. I mean, I love it. But it's missing one thing, a flag. It's missing a flag. So, that's all I got to say. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you Charlie.
Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Hello, Joey Bryant, nineteen point six Resonant. I run the Fairborn How News Events Group, someone we are friends with, a leader party group. It is a great place for Fairborn to communicate together. Radio's kind of dead, news, main news stream's kind of dead, newspaper's kind of dead. The group is where it seems Fairborn seems to communicate about. I'm here just to kind of echo their voice, not really my own voice, but their voice. So, the kind of hot concerns over the past week have been grocery store on the north side of town. There's a lot of concern for that. Youth activities and entertainment, there's practically nothing. Anything that's from the city or anywhere else costs twenty dollars, ten dollars a kid. Fairborn parents can't afford them. When you sell that as free or something that can get, they use mentorship and a big brother, big sister program, something like that, maybe the, something of that nature. I had a lot of talks with the curb. I was at the meeting, the council meeting, or the SIS's form return council meeting last week, or last time, and we talked about the curbs then on Brock Street. Talked about curbs again, but also about the Maple Avenue curbs or the rolling curbs that are damaging cars. The roads are just, it's almost impossible to pull into Speedway on that side of Maple. All down through there, residents are having car damages and none of that's been addressed. We're talking about charging SISs, we're talking charging Brock Street property owners. What is the city, are we allowed to walk down the city roads and start charging you guys, like going down the roads? And that's what it seems like everybody's putting on the residents. But I'm not taking care of our own road, like Maple Avenue, which just got done, it's not getting fixed. Let's see what else we have. They wanted a flea market. I know there's a, they're coming, it was a downtown committee, sorry, the committee has a every two week, kind of a flea market thing they're doing, which is awesome. I think that's what the group wants as well. So, I want to address the issue. I think you guys have something coming for that as well. That hasn't been addressed yet. The homelessness problem is rising and then the dispensary is kind of lax. On the whole topic of everything, I haven't heard much of that either from everybody else. So, the biggest thing was the grocery store youth activities. See Maple Avenue curbs getting fixed. I did have a question about the Fairborn suing Wright State. What other methods have we gone about doing that, like getting soliciting funds for the different intersection activities? Because I sued the big thing. He said the worst case scenario is to sue. But that's not the worst case. The worst case is the fallout from that. Is that going to stop any future funds? Does the state get funds for helping how much they do? Like, what's comparable to the, how much the state tractors do over there and how much they get for helping compared to how little we get for how much we do help? Like, I didn't hear any of that, other than we deserve this money, but why do we deserve all that money? When there's other people doing more than we are for them as well. So, I'm not, I feel like, not trying to back up Wright State, but they just hooked me up with a big kind of educational program for my kids. So, I want to kind of wonder why we're attacking them and we can work together on that. And that was all I had. That's, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with me.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Deborah DeBlanc, D E capital D L A N C. And my address is one one six seven Sanctuary Drive. My concern is that I wanted to know what type of policy, procedures, format, whatever you call it, that the city would have in light of a lot of fires that are occurring or have occurred in California and then most recently in North Carolina and South Carolina? I wanted to know if, because I live in a community, the Sanctuary, and I know that there's the Fisher Homes over there and Meadowland over there. I moved over here because I love the reserve, living in the reserve. But with these fires occurring, it has really sparked my concern. I'm thinking, you know, this is a little bit very close to home. And fire hydrants don't just seem to be enough just to say, okay, well, we have fire hydrants in our community. That's enough to put a fire. But what, what, what's in place? I have, let me back, I have spoken to the Assistant Fire Chief in, in here in Fairborn, and he's trying to calm concerns for me. I've spoken to the City of Street Department. I am not here to really get anyone in trouble, okay? I'm just trying to resolve a concern for me. And I know I could speak for at least a hundred other people. But what, what do we have that would help extinguish a concern like that? Could you answer that or?
When we get done with citizens' comments, then council.
Okay. I think that's about it. I'm just deeply concerned. I don't want to get rid of the reserve. That's why I moved over there. So, if you would really address that, I would greatly appreciate it. And thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. Bruce Kramer, one one six four Ortega Drive in Fairborn. Called this home since nineteen eighty-five when the Air Force brought me here and there are many others. I'd like to echo your comments as well. Thank you much for your service there. I can see in my POW training camp way back when on those Washington Hills. But the reason I'm here tonight, maybe you're already aware of this. Are you aware that the utility billing, the water department's system had these pickups this last month? I don't believe some of you are. I got very frustrated with this. I pulled out last year's as well as this year's billing statements. And quite honestly, I normally don't see the paper bill until the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, even the twenty-fifth. So, I let it go until the twenty-sixth, when I called down here, I says, I've not seen the bill. Yes, I know there was something on there about online, but that didn't impact because I don't do online. I got Christie, three, gave me the new billing number, which I wasn't working. Called USAA, actually, I went online to make my payment and suddenly realized that it says this will go by snail mail, postal service, instead of being electronically billed. That brought back memories of a few years ago, back whenever you changed the system before. And it took so long that time, I finally intercepted the city's banking system, if you will, to talk to them personally, find out there's a problem with electronic bills. This time I thought I could pre-active, spend over an hour online with USA, trying to figure what's going on here. Why is it suddenly, just because an account number change, it will not go by electronic mail? You could hear in a timely manner. They finally came back and the tech department said it's something with the bill. We can't tell you how or why. I called the city back, let them know that there's a problem there. I'm not sure I really got a response. I was satisfied with it. But that's why I'm here tonight, to simply say I thought I have done due diligence to try to get my bill paid on time because I went ahead and paid it back then, as I normally will online. The check is cut and it's in the mail. What do I do about it, other than I try to let the city know? I hope you will at least be understanding enough that I have an excellent record as far as bill paying, that you're not going to try to hit me up with a late fee. I've also talked to a number of neighbors out there. In fact, as of yesterday, I know at least one neighbor still hasn't paid that bill. My bill finally did come on Saturday. What's most interesting is the zip code seven one two zero one is Monroe, Louisiana. The postage meter isn't until the twenty-fourth of February. It went in the mail. I know the city's been putting on it for some time. Failure to receive a bill is not a defense against late or non-payment. Really? I'm also a FSU student, former student. I appreciate what you're going through there. But right now, the model, a city in motion, it seems like a portion of it at least, is in the flight pattern, doing donations or whatever. It's stalled out. I only can hope that this will not take as long as the last time we changed whatever your billing system did. Takes long to get the electronic bill paid back in motion again. I'll be as diligent as I can to follow up on that. I would hope that at least the city utility department will do that. Is this new to everybody up there? Are you aware of this?
We actually addressed this in our work sessions. We're going to steer you towards the young lady sitting back there with her hand up. She, she would be happy to meet with you right after.
Okay, I'm just saying, I know there's a lot of other residents out there I've talked with that are very concerned about this. And for more, let's say hi, I'm going to pay the late fee. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Name's Alan Carney, three twenty-five A Ceni Drive. I want to bring up the fact that the Xenia Cold Storage Stormwater System Revision of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, still has some major design flaws that's still going to allow floodwater backflow from Pearl's Run, which is in the Beaver Creek watershed located on the east side of that property, to flow back and cause catastrophic flooding onto the Chapel Gate Drive and into the Hebble Creek watershed. The storm water, the Xenia Cold Storm, Xenia Cold Storage Stormwater System must be designed to prevent this potential of any type of Beaver Creek watershed floodwater backflow and creating the same kind of catastrophic event of flooding that occurred in March twentieth, twenty-ninth, and later into April of twenty twenty that resulted in massive flooding onto the Chapel Gate Drive Coliseum and floodwaters to nearby businesses and properties along Hebble Creek. Tens and tens and thousands of gallons of floodwater, floodwater backflow from the Beaver Creek watershed occurred, spilling out for over three days. Those same potentials for backwater floodflow exist in the current design that has been proposed by CESA, which is a civil engineers of South, Westphaliau, in their January twenty-fifth design, and they haven't been addressed. Flood prevention into the Hebble Creek watershed must be a first priority for the Xenia Cold Water Storage System design. Crawford Hoarding is giving over one point two three eight million dollars of tax incentives for stormwater infrastructure for this, to help prevent flooding into Hebble Creek. And this is over and above their normal requirement for stormwater infrastructure for a normal development. So, what are they spending that money on? So, I am requesting that three design changes that must be mandated and implemented to ensure full contention, detention basin containment in prevention of floodwater backflow from the Beaver Creek watershed and protect the properties along the Hebble Creek watershed. Number one, the top of the basin levees must be raised to at least eight hundred and thirty-five feet mean sea level for both basins on the southeast and the northwest. This will prevent backflow flooding and overtopping of the existing basins as they're built right now. The current basins are, the top of the basins are at eight hundred and fifty feet. If the creek floods at eight fifty-one, what do you think's going to happen? It's going to go right into the basin and go right over Chapel Gate Drive. No problem. So, as proposed, like I say, the stream can routinely reach eight hundred and fifty-one feet just on a normal rain of one or two inches. The event that occurred in twenty twenty was a three and a half inch rain and that went on spilling thousands, tens of thousands of gallons for three days from the Beaver Creek watershed. Number two, a watertight sluice gate must be installed on the west detention basin, which can be manually closed to stop all the floodwater backflow coming in from that thirty-sixth interconnecting pipe from, stormwater pipe from the southeast basin, which causes the catastrophic backflow when such a flood event occurs. Okay? This is a key fail-safe last resort ability to contain that flood condition. Number three, the southeast basin's bottom and side of the levees must be clay capped to prevent groundwater infiltration. Geotechnical bore data shows. I am, I'm trying to, but this is important. And the southeast basin will penetrate the groundwater. And so, the levee, the water in the basin, the groundwater directly follows the east stream. So, when the flooding occurs there, the groundwater comes up. And I just, and for the record, prior to twenty nineteen, the building of, and the building of the Chapel Gate Coliseum, the eight hundred and fifty-two land level prevented any possibility for this kind of catastrophic flooding back into Beaver Creek. So, cost is not an option or an excuse not to implement these changes. That'll protect the properties and the safety of residents in the Hebble Creek watershed.
Anyone else wishing to speak to council, please come forward at this time.
Hello, my name's Emily Smith, two three eight three Bonner Drive. This is my daughter's first city council meeting. Thought I'd bring her along. Glad I came to this one. It's been pretty interesting. The only thing I wanted to say was, I don't know if it's ever been brought up before, but at five points, the Dairy Queen, on the Old Dayton Yellow Springs Road, they have that entrance right there. And to me, it just seems kind of dangerous because people going thirty-five on the turn from Maple, like you're coming up Maple and then you turn left onto Old Yellow Springs. Some people will stop and try to take that right into that entrance there. And I feel like that's an accident just waiting to happen because, like, it's an immediate stop and then the turn. I didn't know if that did brought up that, feel like maybe she could do. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward with that. Anyone else wishing to speak to council? If there is no one else, we will close citizens' comments and we'll move on to city manager comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman Harris. Just want to go over the actual milestones for March of twenty twenty-five. We have a twenty-five-year pen that will be given to Craig Shout. He's at the Municipal Court in security. And for twenty years, we have a sergeant here, Thorman. We inadvertently missed Kelly Weeks in December. She had them celebrated a year with the city. So, I just want to congratulate all of them. There's some wonderful milestones we've got there. Also, wanted to just be sure to commend John Henny as our IT director. And there has been brand-new improvements made to our granica system, the speakers and the HD quality of our video for government channel access five. So, that is occurring as of tonight, all new stuff. So, hopefully, that will help with Charlie's mention about how it looks on TV and the sound and everything else like that. So, just want to give him props. They've been working on that for quite a while. So has Emily Gay. So, we appreciate those methods. Otherwise, thank you for, to Matt Webbong for presenting for the Finance Department. Hillary for also taking care of that work session. We really appreciate the issues that happened with utility billing. They're working diligently to make sure they take care of everyone. And finally, the involved for all of his work on this stormwater issue. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to council comments and we'll start with Councilwoman Jessica.
Okay, so we've went through a lot tonight, Emily. So, I'm not going to address them all. I need to leave time for Councilwoman Ellen to be able to give his comments, so I'm not going to take that long tonight. I want to thank everybody who came, especially the citizens. For me, it is pretty important that we understand what our citizens' needs are. And when you come forward and let us know what your concerns are, we do hear you and we work diligently to try to address everything that you are concerned about. And so, we certainly appreciate all of the citizens coming out and giving your assessment on what you think that should be, should make Fairborn a better place to live and work and play. Because we know we all love Fairborn because Fairborn is a wonderful city to live in and to work in play. Also, I want to thank all the milestone recipients. You know, to, when you start working for companies, a lot of things to learn, especially the city of Fairborn. And we are really working hard to move forward. Also, the firefighters, I'm telling you, they are absolutely amazing. We want to appreciate the awards and just keeping that on tonight, chief. Thank you for what you have, your leadership. And that's really important. Leadership is really important. And you can tell how your crew is based on the leader. And you have done a magnificent job with your crew. And so, thank you for your hard work and the applause that you give your, your people that work under you. Thank you very much. I'm not going to address anything else. Like I said, I want to make sure that that end down there get their due diligence. And thank you all very much.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Sylvia's comments. And I'd like to piggyback on the first responder event that we had tonight. That was wonderful. And thank you to the TV crews for coming out and covering that. But it's always nice to see good news on TV versus crap we hear every night, which is always negative. So, thanks for that. I would like to point out with those first responders and everything that they did, the response times on that, and those response times were fantastic. Better than a lot of our neighboring communities. And those guys just did a job real, real well. It's that time of year, folks, and we get bombarded every year with this issue. Potholes, they're everywhere. We know it. Please, when you see one, call us and let us know about it. There's also a place on our webpage where you can go and report it if you don't want to talk to about it. But we don't know what we don't know. So, when you see them, report them so we can get out there. And we're going to put a temporary patch on it because the asphalt plans aren't open right now. But we'll at least get something in it so we try to minimize or eliminate any damage to vehicles. The stormwater issue has been a big issue. In my time on council, in my time on planning board, it was the number one issue that we brought up with any PUD. It's very, very important because it has dramatic negative effects. So, we've done a lot of due diligence when it comes to stormwater on all the PUDs that have come before this council since I've been on. We're not perfect. I'm not sure that every PUD that submitted a plan is a hundred percent perfect, but by God, they're really good. So, kudos to everybody that worked on that. Joey, I would like to address the one issue with the Wright State University. I think the city has done their due diligence. When it comes to that particular issue, we've invited them multiple times through two different attorneys, two different city managers. They just don't want to talk. So, due diligence has been done. It's time to take a stand for you guys as much for the rest of the city. Charlie, Bruce, thank you for your service. Thank you all, citizens, for your comments tonight. We really do appreciate them. And I'll yield the floor.
So, yeah, congratulations to all the milestone recipients. Thank you. Thank you for your service to the city. Thanks for, to the folks that came forward tonight. Appreciate your comments and welcome to our very, your first council meeting. I'm sure it's too very exciting, right? It probably was a little more exciting than a standard one, so that, that's good. Let's see here. Joey, thanks for coming. Thanks for the comments. We have some other folks that come sometimes and do that type of a thing where they are members of larger communities and they come and kind of give us updates of their meeting through other people and it's always really appreciated. Thinking of one person in particular that does that a lot, I find it helpful. And in the same comment that Rodney had, like, we, there has been so much attention to contact Wright State on this. It's kind of just like the last step, like the last thing we can possibly do just to get people's attention. And the city, I think there was an exchange between Wood Clint's question to Mike about all the things that we do for Wright State. And there is a lot of cost that goes into, especially that gets raised when those events happen. That, you know, that's, our taxpayers are paying for those services to go and provide that service for those Wright State events. As far as Deborah, the comments that you have about the concerns about the fire, I, that's, I'm going to look into that and find you and get back to you because I'm curious about that too. I'm not sure that the area that's behind you would be something that would have, have an issue like that. I'm not sure that the area that's behind you would be something that would have an issue like that, but just. So, because I, anyway, I'd like, that it would get that dry to have a fire, like that's one, something I want to, I'd be curious about. And we've had conversations before, like I've asked Mike before, what are our emergency plans are in general? If there's going to be like a natural disaster. So I know I haven't even gone over him once where he like outlined this very solid seeming plan of that. So let us, you know, get back to you on that. And I think there's probably a lot of good information to address your questions. And then utility bills. Bruce, he's going to get hooked up with Hillary. She's going to help him out. We got a presentation about that in our work session prior, that there were, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is we understand their hiccups. So within a reasonable amount of time, we understand that we are not going to like charge extra to people who are caught in this hiccup for this short period of time. Is that right?
To be sent the ordinance allows.
To the extent the ordinance allows. So there's an understanding with the department to work with people on that with the hiccups. I'm not going to address what Al said, too. I already talked a lot about it in the work session tonight. And then hopefully in a following meeting, well, definitely in a following meeting that we agree to with engineering. And I, I don't know about the Dairy Queen. I haven't, I'll, we'll start paying attention to that and just see what we think about that, right? So, okay, that covers everybody's comments and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to congratulate and thank all the milestone recipients for their continued service to the city. We appreciate all you do. With that, I also want to thank the, our emergency services, Fire Department, Police Department. Specifically tonight, those that were recognized for their efforts. Thank you. And also thank you to all those that came up with your concerns. We really want the input, good and bad. We can't fix it if we don't know what needs fixing. So thank you for that as well. And thank you for all those who came out to attend tonight.
You know, I appreciate my colleagues here that I serve with on this council because they say a lot of the things that I want to say. So we've got all of those out of the way, right? And I will say thank you all for the citizens who came and shared their heart and shared their feelings and shared their thoughts, opinions, and views. You have given us a lot of opportunity. We have a ton of opportunity to help improve things, help fix things. As, as, as Sori just said, you know, if we don't know about it, we can't, we can't address the problem. You know, at least, and I think we've done some of that tonight when we started addressing the issue with the stormwaters. We've got to take one bite of the apple at a time. Congratulations to our milestone recipients. And I appreciate the fact that we went back and congratulated Ms. Weeks. You know, that's, that's beautiful. I think it's, it's great that we acknowledge those milestones. And the fact that we went back, we made a mistake, we went back and addressed it and recognized her. Thank you so much, Chief, for bringing, giving us this opportunity to witness and celebrate the accomplishments and the sacrifices made every day by the men and women who served in our Fire Department. Those awards for the firefighters and paramedics is just phenomenal. And to sit here, I've never witnessed a Medal of Honor being, the citation and everything being given to one of our A firefighter or paramedic is phenomenal. That's, that's beautiful. And thank you for your service. You are truly the leader in this community. That's, that's one of the staples in this community is our police and fire. We pass levies for our police and fire, and I am never ashamed of passing a levy to support our police and fire because they are phenomenal. They come to work every day. They sacrifice. They give in, they lean in, they help, they assist in every single way. They always give. True servants in this community. So whenever we get those opportunities to thank a firefighter, a paramedic, a policeman, please, sir, please, ma'am, do that because they are sacrificing each and every day. Thank you. As Sori said, we allow, we, I guess we approved the Green County Board of Health, someone to sit on the Green County Board of Health. I would like, maybe in a work session, we've got two people who sit on that board to represent Fairborn. I would like, in a work session, to hear from them, to see what they do to support us if they're representing the city. I would love to be able to hear how they represent us on that board. I think that would be important. The, the last thing I want to share is that this is Women's History Month. This is the beginning of Women's History Month. And it's just another, again, just an opportunity for us to recognize the individual and collective contributions that women have made in this country. And in, I think on later in the week is International Women's Day. But by all means, please go out, seek some history, understand the significant contributions that women have made. I celebrate them and I ask that you celebrate them as well this month. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. I'll try to cut out a lot of the redundancy. There's been a lot of great things said tonight. I've said it probably a hundred times. I'll say it a hundred more. Thank you to our milestone recipients. Thanks for choosing to serve. The citizens of Fairborn, we appreciate you. I've also said this a hundred gazillion times, Fairborn Fire Department, Fairborn Police Department, the best of the best. Hands down, I put them up against anyone. In fact, they actually, I believe it was last year was the, was the signing by the governor for the accreditation and they actually achieved it. So thank you, Fairborn Police Department. I was, I was doing good during your presentation, Ryan, until you caught that frog and then my allergies started acting up. So thanks. Thank you to everyone who came forward. Your feedback is greatly appreciated. No need to repeat what everybody else has said, but it is greatly appreciated. Real quick, though, on the potholes, I just want to say lightheartedly that no, the one at the corporate entrance is not in the city. That is private property. If you know, you know. Utility billing, we did have a very good presentation by Hillary about that. And yes, with change, there comes quite a few hiccups. And I appreciate Hillary and her team stepping up and helping out the utility team and giving some breaks in there and making sure that we were supporting each other and all of that. The, the great thing, despite the hiccups, is that there are far more payment options. Whether you're an online person or texting or whatever the case may be, there's a lot more options. And I'm really excited, once we get past the hiccups, on what that will bring us. So with that, I believe I'm done with my comments.
Thank you all. Unfortunately, I have two pages of notes from people's comments I didn't respond to. I'm going to start off with the Fire Department. Chief, you've heard me say this repeatedly. We have the best Fire Department in the state. We do. Tonight was a good example of that. Not just the fact that we recognize those, but look at the crowd of firefighters who showed up to show support for each other. And that's the kind of Fire Department we have. They work together, they support each other. And they do that largely because we have the best chief in the state of Ohio. Now, I say that, and you know I'll say that because I believe in that. Okay, I'm going to answer some of the comments that people came forward. Charlie, let me explain about the bricks for the memorial. There is a reason why the bricks aren't out there yet, the newer bricks. The bricks for the Fairborn Military Veterans Memorial are ordered in batches. We don't just order a few bricks and have a shift. We have to order them in large quantities, otherwise the price goes up exponentially. The second order of bricks arrived about two months ago. They cannot place the bricks until there's a guarantee of several days of no freezing weather. The reason is the bricks are, there's gravel and there's sand on top of the gravel and then the bricks are placed. If it's a freeze-thaw cycle, like we've had continuously for the last couple of months, there's moisture in the gravel. And what they have told me for the walls that we're going to put up for the Veterans Memorial and for the bricks, if you don't wait till it's consistently above freezing, that moisture in those bricks or in the gravel, as you place the bricks and the walls that are going to go around the memorial, they'll be settling. And the bricks will settle and then it will be even. So they have to wait until there's consistent period above freezing.
Now I understand.
The second batch of bricks arrived two months ago, but we haven't had the opportunity to place them because of that freeze-thaw cycle. We don't want to put in bricks or walls around the memorial, which is the next phase, and have those walls or bricks settle unevenly. We want to do this. We want to do it right. So we are constantly reordering bricks in batches. We're working on the third batch now. We haven't placed that order because we don't have enough bricks ordered. We don't order them in small lots. We order them in big groups. The audio visual, that's being addressed in here. I think you're going to see big improvements very soon. You mentioned a flag from Memorial Park. There is a flag planned. Again, waiting for the opportunity to do concrete work where there's gravel underneath. The old flag from the American Legion building is in storage to go into the middle of the park. Along with five or six flags for the different branches of the military will also surround that large flag. You'll see that in the spring when we get the weather is good. So I hope that answers your concerns, Charlie.
Yeah, if I knew all that, I wouldn't even have to come.
Well, I knew you asked the questions, so I'm sure others have similar questions about it. So that's why I wanted to take a minute to explain that. Joey, thanks for being here. You brought up some good points. The grocery store in the Northside town, when the Fullners closed years ago, we immediately noticed the void. We have a grocery desert up there. And that, that has been in the works for years. We approached several grocery businesses, and this was years ago. None of them were willing to locate there. We were able to get Dollar General to come in. The Dollar General that is in that old Fullners location, at the time they went in, which was a number of years ago, they purposely put in the largest section of refrigerated food items of any Dollar General in the state of Ohio. That's what they told us. And if you go in there, they do have a much larger than normal Dollar General refrigerated section to help address that. Would we like to get a grocery store up there? Absolutely. But we don't tell the grocery stores where to locate. We've asked several grocery stores. So far, unfortunately, we haven't been successful at that. Youth entertainment programs? Absolutely. I met with a group of high school students a couple of months ago, and that was hot on their list for affordable entertainment. We would love to get some more of those programs. Curbs on Maple? Yes. Everybody complains about it. Unfortunately, to fix the problem would be cost prohibitive. We need to look at some other alternatives for that. We do get a lot of complaints about those curves. The pothole issue, and Mary touched on that, we do have pothole problems. And again, it also goes back to the freeze-thaw cycle. And I've talked to some engineers about that. The more you have freezing and then nice weather, and you're freezing and then nice weather, the worse the potholes get. We've had a lot of complaints about the potholes on the entry to six-seventy-five and on six-seventy-five. Unfortunately, that is not Fairborn. That is ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation. We don't fix those. If you notice a pothole, especially a newer pothole, and sometimes they literally pop up overnight, please let the city know so we can get a crew out there. The problem is you can't make asphalt, major asphalt repairs, again, until the weather is above freezing because the asphalt plans close for the month. So we're stuck making some temporary repairs. And we all know that temporary repairs to potholes don't last forever. So if you see a pothole, especially a newer one, let the city know so we can get a crew out to take a look at it. Nobody likes potholes, but that's an issue. You mentioned the market. We do have a farmers' market that starts in the spring and runs off in the summer. That should be starting up soon. Joey also talked about homelessness. That's a problem all over the country. We do have some homeless people in Fairborn. We have a couple of folks that we've approached to offer help. Some of them don't want help. That's unfortunate, but that's a reality. Others, there are options that we try to help find them a place to deal with those things. The marijuana dispensary, that's still an issue. The state came out last week with some new proposed changes to the laws that were passed. We're waiting to see where that goes. I've talked to our state representative about that. The state's budget is supposed to be approved in June. We don't know what direction the marijuana changes that are being proposed at the state level are going to be impacted by that budget or not. So we don't want to make decisions that we have to turn around and change just a couple of months later till we know exactly what we're dealing with at the state level. Deborah, you live in Sanctuary. I live in Meadowlands, right across from you. So we have issues and concerns with fire. From the time I was in fourth grade through college, I lived in Southern California, so I know all about the fires. And it is an ongoing issue out there. My best friend from high school and college lives in Los Angeles and the fires came close enough to him that he had major concerns. Fires out there are every year occurrence. I know that, you know that. The Sanctuary, you're right behind that reserve area. We certainly hope that's never an issue. You'll notice as you go in there, there's a neighborhood watch program sign for both Sanctuary and Meadowlands. Please encourage your neighbors that if they see a problem starting to occur, whether it's fire or crime, let people know so we can get that addressed. We do have the best Fire Department in the state of Ohio. And if there is a fire issue, are you going to be on top of that? Absolutely. We know that. So thanks for bringing that up. And we'll see what we can do to make sure we don't have problems like that. Bruce, you're going to meet with Hillary, so hopefully your billing questions will get resolved and we can move on. Okay, now on page two. Al, thanks for being here. We know that this is not a perfect system, never will be for stormwater. Like I grew up in California, there's all kinds of issues there. We have issues here. We hope the resolution that went through tonight is going to address the vast majority of those. I know there are additional issues. I know you and Manuel are going to get together real soon and hopefully work through some of those. We want it to be the best possible solution it can be. Will it ever be perfect? No, because we don't. Weather is not perfect. We try to do the best that we can. Emily, thank you for being here. We watched that Dairy Queen go in over several years, the changes. Excuse me, there was an old barber shop there for a long time. Traffic was not a problem with that. With the Dairy Queen, I drive by there frequently. There's almost always a line around there. And hopefully, we can take a look at that entrance and make sure it doesn't become a problem. Okay, I'm not going to touch on the milestones. We beat that. Fantastic stat. John, you're here tonight. Thank you for being here. Thanks for what your folks are doing with the access channel and all of that. I do want to throw out, and I mentioned this at the work session, Fairborn night last week with Wright State. We have a great relationship with Wright State, other than this issue with the NOS, which hopefully we can get resolved. At Fairborn night, we were playing Cleveland State. At Fairborn Night, we were playing Cleveland State. Cleveland State was heavily favored. They were going to trounce all over Wright State. Everyone was semi-prepared for that. And what happened in the last couple of minutes, but Wright State came back, pulled out to the lead and ended with a victory over Cleveland State. So kudos to the coach and the players. It was a great Fairborn Night. And I want to thank Dr. Sue Edwards, the university president. They funded the food items that were at Fairborn Night. Those that showed up, and we had a good crowd, big crowd, everybody had a great time there. I do want to welcome back Sylvia. We've missed you. I know you've had some health issues and concerns, hopefully you're returning. We're heading in the right direction now. Close by making a comment, we have sorely missed our city manager, Mike McQuaid. He has been out for two hip surgeries, now two total hip replacements over the last two months. It was fantastic to see him here tonight. Please, if you talk to him, tell him to take it easy. He's the kind of guy that will be here at the drop of a hat if we ask him to, but he needs to recover from his surgery. We wish him well, we wish his wife Jen and the kids well, but he needs to take it easy. We have been very fortunate with Terry Atkins and Robin here filling in, doing fabulous work as our fillers. So thank you for that, Robin. Kudos to you and Terry. And I also want to thank Mike McQuaid. We've had some interesting challenges we've had tonight, and Mike has really stood up to the plate. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank one more person who's sitting right down here in front of us. Julie, who keeps the council in line and makes sure we do the right thing. So thank you for that. At this time, is there any other council comments? Okay, there is no additional business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Stand by.
Stand by.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Reister?
Yes.
Mr. Fritzi?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yay.
Mr. Stan?
Yes.
Thank you all for being here this evening, meeting is adjourned.